All the meeting order, it is Monday, February 3rd, 6:00 PM in the great town of Lee. Start with public comment, please limit public comment to three minutes. Come to the podium and state your name and address. Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin, 187 Steppingstones Road. The voters have not been provided with all the information that's required by the municipal budget law. RSA 32-5 Budget Preparation, Roman IV. Budget forms for the annual meeting shall include, in the section showing recommended appropriations, comparative columns indicating at least the following information: A. Appropriations voted by the previous annual meeting, and B. Actual expenditures made pursuant to those appropriations. Or, and this is a part that applies to Lee, in those towns and districts which hold annual meetings prior to the close of the current fiscal year, actual expenditures for the most recently completed fiscal year. The town did not completely provide this information. Missing is account section 4915 Transfers to Capital Reserve Funds, and 4916 Transfers to Trust and Agency Funds. The December 23rd Select Board Agenda attachment included these sections, but with one fund missing and without the recommendations of ABC. This error was repeated in the attachment for the January 6th meeting. I pointed out what was missing. Instead of correcting the error for the meeting on the 13th, these two sections were removed. Again, I pointed out the error, and yet the handout at the deliberative session was also missing this information. It's the governing body's responsibility to see that this information is provided to the voters. At the deliberative session, it was clear that some residents are concerned about the next tax rate and the tax impact figures. With the town estimate heading up to an increase of $1.10, the school district predicting an increase of $1.56 for Lee, and a few pennies for the county, the total is a 10.6% increase. Coming after consecutive increases of 8.8% and 9.1%, the concern is understandable. RSA 32-5, Roman 5-B states that, "The determination of the estimated tax impact shall be subject to the approval of the governing body." This year, the process of estimating the tax impact, in particular, the revenue to be used in the calculation was performed late and with inadequate analysis of the revenue sources. This process should be started sooner and with all dollar amounts in evidence.
Okay, thank you. Please, can you make sure that those missing pieces of information are available to everybody on our website and line to inquire and such? Okay, any... All right, then let's start with appointments. Chief Johnson.
Good evening. I think the first thing is detail rate.
That's what I have first, yes.
Yeah, so back again, the detail rates have been going up all around us. Last time I came to the board, the board had actually suggested going to 70, and at that time I was worried that it was a little too much. Apparently, it's not because we're back down to the bottom of the pecking order. So I'm requesting that we move it up to 70 and we'll be in with the average of all the municipalities around us.
Okay, questions?
Can you remind us, because there's a rate for details, there's a rate for borrowing the car?
Yeah, so right now our detail rate is 60. The car is 15, that'll stay the same.
Okay. Nothing else?
Nope.
Changes?
Okay.
Great.
Yep.
Then I move to grant the police chief permission to increase the town of Lee's police detail rate to $70 an hour and the current rate of $60 per hour.
Would you be amenable to saying effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
Thank you. Thank you.
All those appear. Aye. Thank you. Then we have the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety Grant Amendment.
So we had received a grant, around $21,000, to purchase, it was for highway safety grants, DUI patrols, speed patrols, things like that, and an in-car system. I'm looking to the future, the car that we're going to be in the run of next does not have any of these, any of this equipment in it.
Okay.
So there, in talking to Highway Safety, they had called us initially and said, "Hey, do you want another $1,000 of patrol money?" And I said, "Yeah," I said, "what else have you got?" So we decided to put it all together for another radar unit and a mobile data terminal, so that when we do purchase a new cruiser, we will already have the equipment now while the grant money is available. So what they did was they just amended the grant that we had already been awarded to reflect those items.
Okay, great. Questions?
How are you doing the match? What is that? Is that, because there's a match requirement?
Yeah, it's in my budget.
Okay, so it's something...
It's in my new covering line item, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. The town of Lee Select Board in a majority vote accepts the amended agreement number 25-102 from the New Hampshire Department of Safety, increasing the grant award from $21,988.75 to $31,135.99.
Second.
All those appear. Aye.
Thank you.
A lot of free money. Uh, you got a third thing. New Hampshire Department of Safety Grants for Cameras?
Well, it's actually all in that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, all that one, yeah.
This is the new one you said. Isn't it? For $5,100.
Oh, yeah, we did, okay. We got this one, yeah. So this one is towards the new camera, in-car camera system.
Do we need to accept that one as well? I don't really worry for that, Denny.
Yes.
Okay. Questions about the New Hampshire Department of Safety reimbursement grant for cameras and agency vehicles with dashboard cameras?
No.
Okay. The town of Lee Select Board in a majority vote accepts the terms of the New Hampshire Department of Safety Grant as presented in the amount not to exceed $5,100 towards purchasing body worn cameras and dashboard cameras. The board acknowledges that this is a 50% reimbursement grant and expenses above amount will come from the police department's operating budget.
Second.
All those appear.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You got the grants. All right.
So didn't she give them, when we do consent to the final?
Oh, yes. The other one didn't need to be signed, does it?
Oh, the other one doesn't have to be signed?
No, she does. I recall it.
A bunch of signing. This is why I don't worry, you sign every single page.
Thank you. So am I grantee one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Right. Assistant Town Administrator. So Karen was unable to make it tonight, just under the weather. So this is just the final step. We have a proposed order from Judge Swakka Gardner granting the town permission to move forward with removing the structure from 201 Caleb Highway. So this is just to wrap it up, you're granting the town administrator permission to enter into an agreement with Kitter Building to remove and/or demolish the property that's on the building that's on 201 Caleb Highway. Okay? Questions?
No.
Okay. I move to grant the town administrator permission to enter into an agreement with Kitter Building and Wrecking Inc. for the removal and/or demolition of the property located at 201 Caleb Highway, Lee, New Hampshire, and to file a lien against said real estate for the purpose of collecting a debt per RSA 80.
Second.
All those appear.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, and the other thing is just, I just wanted to give you an update that I haven't received anything yet, but I put it out there that the deadline was the 12th.
Okay.
So hopefully people, we seem to wait till the last minute.
Great.
Send out another reminder, all the committee, commissions, and everybody. And that's all I have.
Did you get here back from the New Hampshire Municipal Association about the budget change? And if we, what do we do with that?
Oh, I, well, interesting. I reached out to DRA, and they said, and I wrote an email back just confirming, that the Select Board recommends or does not recommend in the budget article, apparently, first of all, that doesn't even need to be in there at all because it is your budget and you are presenting it, so it's redundant to have that. But if you want to have that in there, you can, and you can change it after deliberative session if you did recommend it, but then changes were made at deliberative session, and then now you don't recommend it,
Okay.
you can change that.
Okay. I don't know, we need that sentence in there, do you?
What was the issue?
The Select Board recommends or doesn't recommend article number four, the budget.
The budget was amended at the deliberative session.
Oh, what did they change it to?
They increased it by $6,000 for the select purpose of paying the Stratford Regional...
Plenipotentiary.
Plenipotentiaries.
And they know that we don't have to do that?
Um, I tell people that, but I don't know if they all understand that. Right, so that's what DRA wanted to say.
What are you proposing? That we change it from recommend to not recommend?
Well, it was left as recommend slash does not recommend when the article was presented.
Oh.
I believe that we had previously voted to recommend it.
Yes.
So I just wanted to confirm, since it was changed, apparently you can change it, you can remove the sentence, or you can leave it as recommends.
Oh, I voted against it.
I am aware of that fact. And I voted for it, so we're at a standstill since we know Mr. David today. How do you feel about removing the sentence, making everybody miserable?
You'd like to spread the pain around a little bit?
Uh, I mean, I don't, I think that's a compromise.
So right now, the one that was put into the thing says recommend slash does not recommend?
Does slash does not. I know, that's not what we voted.
No, that was, I don't know how that happened, but...
Mr. Tappin?
No, it was in there already. You recommend that it stay that way.
Can I ask Mr. Tappin a question?
No. Yes, of course. If Mr. Tappin's inclined to listen to your question, sure.
So, from what I just heard, Mr. Tappin recommended it say the Select Board recommends or slash does not recommend?
He recommended that it stayed that way because the slide said, correct? The slide said does, does not.
At the deliberative session, when the change was made, the town administrator then recommended that it should say Select Board does not recommend. And I voiced my opinion, which is that it should say, instead of does not recommend, it should say does slash does not, because at this point, at that point, the new budget had not been approved or voted on one way or the other by the Select Board. And RSA 32, the budget law says that if there are changes made to any article at the deliberative session, then the Select Board has the opportunity to vote again. Both Select Board and ABC, if you had one, have the opportunity to vote again on their recommendation.
Or have nothing.
Or have nothing.
Or take it out. Like DRA says, it does not need to be in that article.
It just, my, the reason I got up and spoke was that I thought that it should not be changed to say the Select Board does not recommend.
Right, right. So really, what should've gone up there was the Select Board recommends because two voted for and one voted against.
Yep.
So it's incorrectly...
But...
Now I'm forgetting, what did the slide actually say?
It said does slash does not recommend.
It did.
And, and the point was, at the deliberative session, after that change was made, the town administrator recommended that the wording be changed to say does not recommend because it was a different budget. But at that point, at that point, it's premature to say does not recommend because the statute allows the Select Board to then vote again if there's any change. And that applies to any article that has your recommendation. If there's a change to it, then you have the opportunity to revote.
So this was before the $6,000 was added?
No, this was after the $6,000 was added.
After the $6,000?
Yes.
It was the town...
There was no amendment, there was no written amendment by the town administrator.
Correct.
He just...
Suggested.
Suggested.
After the amount was changed by adding the $6,000, and that was approved by the voters and voted on, then the town administrator made the recommendation that it should say Select Board does not recommend.
Based on...
Based on the fact that it was changed, that it was a different budget...
That it was changed, and that's not what you recommended.
Which you had not recommended. But my point was, you hadn't recommended it because you hadn't had the opportunity yet to recommend it. And tonight you do.
So right now I say...
Or take the statement out, it's your choice.
At this moment, it sounds like you're in favor of leaving in the $6,000.
I am, well, we can't remove the $6,000.
Right, but you can...
But I am in favor of the budget. With the amendment.
So you're not in favor of saying the Select Board doesn't recommend?
I am not in favor of saying it does not recommend.
But you were in favor of the Select Board recommends?
Sure, yes.
All right, so I'm not in favor of that.
I'm aware of that.
So let's do the compromise and let's remove it.
Okay.
Which will be very confusing for voters, so...
Maybe. Well, they can watch this video and they can...
We could put in the voter's guide. We could explain in the voter's guide.
So can I ask something else? If the chair will indulge me. One of the things that I asked somebody to speak to is the revenue issue that Mr. Tappin brought up again. So that was not covered?
In what way?
In what way? Because on the slide, it says revenue is at $2.6 million as of the IMS 434R or something like that?
Okay.
So nothing was spent, talked about in terms of, that's not what we're expecting for revenue?
We did say that, actually.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we did. We did point that out. But that was not the number that was used, because there was a discussion, how was the tax, the tax rate impact? And so we did say it was not calculated with the same revenue as the $2.1.
So I guess I move to, for article number four, to remove the language Select Board recommends slash does not recommend this particular article from the articles.
Second. All those appear.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anything else? No. Okay.
Do we have, and I was there. Do we have somebody for each position that's open?
No.
What are we missing?
ABC.
And trustees, trustees.
Right.
Nobody, oh. Okay. So try to get some writings for those. Okay, thanks.
Anything else you'd like to ask about the meeting?
How many people attended? I heard 40. 42?
I actually thought, I mean...
Wow, that's pretty good.
Yeah, I, I would wish more people would come, but yeah, it's hopeless.
Well, you did have Snook.
Yeah.
So that is...
But you also live in New England.
Yeah, well, maybe next year we can have it on the second day, second weekend instead of the first.
Well, then there's a lot you have to say. Last day you can have it, so then we wouldn't have to...
That's what Verity did this year.
Really? That's dangerous.
That's what I would think. All right, anything else? All right, the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. Then I move to accept the consent agenda as presented with the addition of the December 9th Select Board Meeting note minutes.
Is that number seven?
I think that that seven is other minutes, or is it these ones?
No, it's these ones, yeah.
Oh, okay, never mind, then I thought these were additional to those ones.
Second.
All those appear.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That's nothing, it's my everything. Okay, well, there are only one signature papers in here.
No, there's three, I think.
There's various in here. I'll take that out. Are you sure?
Yeah. You and I lied to you?
Hopefully.
Especially with the police chief here, he wouldn't tell, lying. Yeah, 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 right there. Look at this three. This is one. Oh, you need to sign this.
Why are we signing this?
You did.
Because you don't have the first-hand control there.
Yeah, there's subsequent pages that you did sign.
Oh, okay, you did, so...
Did I lie to you?
Um, yes, I believe that, too. Where precisely did you sign?
I'm sorry?
Was it here where my signature was, or here where my signature was?
Keep on pulling to the pages.
Oh, the one about the sticky.
Yeah. I didn't want to say anything to throw Denise underneath the bus, but you know, there was no sticky.
That's, that would be what I intended. It's like I cybered Denise.
Denise, your reputation for stickies has gone just, just right down.
Was it just this one? That was missing? There's a couple of them.
There's three of them.
All right, cool. This is a hot mess, just so you know, Denise. Okay. That's okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to go to renew her sticky crown because it's unacceptable. Now the assessing ones?
Yeah, I thought it was at the bottom of the first page. Oh, no, you're right. No.
Let it go this time.
You can always send it to a stichology refresher class.
That's, that's, that's a good idea. I was gonna say, making those things there, so when you have your evaluation put down, we need a ten sticky...
Make sure you put a sticky back slot.
Now, you're usually pretty good, but...
All right, well, I think, I think I've gotten them all at this point. It's a hot mess, though, I'm so sorry.
When she goes through it, she'll notice if there's anybody...
Well, she'll let me know, she'll yell at me later. Use my reach.
Whoa.
All right. It seems like there's no old or new business. Okay, and we just have A for non-public?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move to enter into non-public session, New Hampshire RSA 91-A:3, Roman numeral 2, A.
Second.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne? Yes? Mr. Rensen?
Yes.
Fantastic. I was at the very bottom after like 50 million things, and I haven't found it yet.
Okay.
Motion to seal limits for non-public.
Second.
Alls in favor? No? Or a fall. Mr. Budby?
Yes.
Ms. Hawthorne? Yes. Mr. Redson?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, anything else?
At some point, we have to do the schedule for March 11th.
Okay. Maybe we can copy the same one as last time.
Okay.
Alright, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, my teaching's been a lot.